Good evening, I'd like to call the Meckuan Municipal Water Utility Commission Meeting of October 27th to order. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Strelcek is absent, Commissioner Bushy is absent, Commissioner Meyer?
Here.
Commissioner Hancher?
Here.
Commissioner Garrel?
Here.
Commissioner Parrish?
Here.
Commissioner Schneider?
Here.
And Commissioner Nurban?
Here.
First up, we have approval of the minutes from our last meeting on August 10th.
Move approval.
Second, motion in a second. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing done, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Next up, we've got several discussion and possible action items. I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules to take up item G, the Village of River Hills' request for water service first, since I see a few officials from University School of Milwaukee in the audience, and I don't want to make them wait till the end of our meeting. So if someone would make that motion in a second.
So moved.
Second, motion in a second, all in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we can take up that matter now first, so if your staff give it a quick intro, I don't know if Kristen or Jim's gonna give the...
Hi Kristen. We were originally going to be before you tonight with some draft language for the intergovernmental agreement, Water Services Agreement, so that you could otherwise review and consider the further discussion on the terms and conditions should you otherwise decide that we would expand the user service area to serve the Village of River Hills. As I was literally finishing the memo, we received an email from River Hills indicating that the university school's connection was in question, and they were requesting a meeting to have a review of the pro forma, absent university school. And I otherwise understand that they may want to give an update as their position was otherwise represented.
Correct, I think, does anyone from University School wanna speak on the matter as to their level of interest? Sure, just come to the podium. We know Greg Bach, Greg Bach's on our planning commission as an alternate, but maybe give your address as well for the record.
Yes, Greg Bach, 12641 River Forest Circle. River Forest Circle, there's a home with 12641 on River Forest Drive with the same address. We get all their pizzas and... But thanks for letting us chat a little bit on this project, just so we can give the school's position. I, as some of you probably know, I, after 37 years retired from University School last year, but the schools asked me to stay on for some projects, and this is one of them, because I had been working on this project for two years for the school. So I thought it'd be great, since we've got, I saw our name in the packet, just to give you some information, there's a lot of communication issues, but just to make sure everybody's on the same page. Just so you know, the school is served by two wells, plus a secondary fire pond, and then there's a 50,000 gallon cistern on campus with one of the construction projects in 2010 that was required by the fire department. So there's a lot of well and fire protection infrastructure in the school. Matter of fact, North Shore Fire, you know, wanted the entire school to be sprinkled. That was a five-year project, we just finished last year, but the school spent about $2.5 to $3 million just on that. So a lot of money has been put in on infrastructure. As I said, I've been working on this project for about two years, and it's a big project. And I think a village engineer, Village of River Hills engineer came to the school with this kind of initial request about possibly putting, asking for an easement and putting an eight-inch line on the west side of our campus. And we were intrigued, so we began to study some of the options. It should be clear that USM is and continues to be interested in converting to city water, but there is a need to understand all of the financial implications. And I think we made that clear in the June packet that was submitted. I put a letter in there, and I think that it said that the school was very interested, that we had some financial issues to go through, and those are still there. The school is prepared, and you know, I spent two years working with the school to sell them on this, and so everybody is pretty much up to speed, other than this financial part. The school is already to be, prepared to pay the estimated $40,000 annual Meckuan water bill. So that was based on 2017, 2018, and 2019 water usage on the campus. So from that, at least with working with our engineers, it looks like it'd be about $40,000 a year. The school's prepared to pay for that. School's also prepared to spend $200,000 for the needed internal water conversion. That's what it's gonna, we estimate it's gonna cost the school. We've got pretty hard numbers on that. That includes fire protection conversion, the plumbing, and the electrical. The questions that we have are, one, the lateral costs, okay? So we've got some preliminary estimates from our engineers. It started at $250,000, and then it was up to 300, and then it was 350,000, but I don't have any firm numbers on that, on what that actual lateral cost will be. So we need some more work on that. Then, during this whole discussion with River Hills, we moved to put in a 12-inch lateral was needed, or 12-inch main was needed to handle the fire protection needs, the pressure for the fire protection. We never talked about the school paying for any of that in any of the discussions. And so, I'll come back in a second, but the village, I think, may be expecting USM to pay for that as well. And then other village costs, you know, are there other village costs? So we don't know any of those things. In April, the school sent a letter to the village asking if they would be willing to pay for the lateral connection for the school. We really want to make this kind of a win-win, so we put in a request to say, "Hey, could you help the school with this cost?", and we never got a response. In June, we attended this meeting, and we chatted with the village staff on the steps after the meeting, and they said, "Hey, okay, great, we're ready to talk, we're ready to talk." Again, I heard nothing in June, July, or August. Finally, I heard from the new village president, Chris Noys, in September, asking for a meeting on October 7th. I assumed it was gonna be a response to my letter that we sent in April. I learned at that meeting that he had not even seen that letter. Apparently, that letter was lost with another school submission, and they never saw the letter. So he was surprised at my request and said, "Ah, the village really is not in a position to help with that lateral cost." So I sent a follow-up email, reiterating the school's request. It was acknowledged, but there was not a response. I did get a call from a village president, Chris Noys, saying that the village was prepared to move forward without USM. I said, "Chris", now here's New, New in his position, I said, "You probably should check with Meckuan first, because everything that I have heard", and even at that last June meeting, was that USM is an important partner in this project. He said, "Great, great, great, but I don't know who to call." So I gave him engineer's name, and administrator, water administrator's name, and asked him to call and said, "Get back to me." So then, I haven't heard anything, I think he's out of the country, and now this meeting was scheduled, and I was never notified, and USM is in the report. I assume that information came from Chris, because he's the only one that I have been communicating with directly. I know the village engineer has been very involved in this project, but I don't know who is actually communicating about, but there certainly was not some factual information in that letter. So, that's my point, seems that there's been some communication issues. USM has always had a great relationship with the village, and we want to continue to have that relationship. We want to make this work to create a win-win for all parties. But basically, we need a proposal from the village with all the infrastructure costs, hopefully an offer to help with some of those costs. And then, once I have that information, I can take it to the school's finance committee, and they can give their quick blessing. But if I don't have anything, and we don't know the cost for some of these things, it's really hard to present that to the school, to the finance committee, to say, "Hey, this is what's gonna, this is what's gonna happen." So, that's the school's position, we're ready, but we just need to, I think, get everybody on the same page. Happy to take questions, our engineers are here also from Braef, so if anybody has an engineering question, they're here as well.
I just might want to make a couple notes. Number one, of course, this is difficult at this stage, being conceptual, but otherwise needing to move forward, because we've requested pro forma, but the Meckuan Water Utility has not yet said yes to serving River Hills. So we were still trying to work through the terms and agreements for a connection, and not, are not yet at the stage of saying yes, and/or considering what the terms of connection are. We did request the financial pro forma, that essentially was trying to determine if this single residential development could provide the revenue to otherwise serve its replacement costs, which it showed that it did not. And the updated pro forma included the university school, which then showed that it would. So that is the stage that we were otherwise at, but we were just starting to work through, again, what those terms and conditions were for the connection. Things like what you've heard before about requiring the secondary connection under I-43, the upsizing of the main, and other requirements that would be made, from our perspective at least, to provide for good water utility infrastructure. But in terms of the actual financials, obviously, we haven't been a part of that, nor would we for most developments. The utility operates on a build-and-contribute basis. We would also be interested in having a conversation with USM to make sure they're making the best decisions in terms of how their campus should be served, and maybe even with the North Shore Fire Department.
Yep, yep.
Did I say that correct? Because we think there may be benefits from them being served by a public main, rather than by a service lateral, and that would certainly change elements of the project as well. So we would be happy to be invited into any of the conversations about what makes sense. We were really just trying to get together some of the terms and conditions for this body to make sure that we were going in the right direction for you to ultimately make the decision as to whether the answer is going to be yes or no to serving River Hills.
Yes, to recap where we were in June, we had agreed that we would be open to considering it if the financial pro forma made sense, and we could pull the elements of the plan together, and then it just seems like things have fallen apart and gotten, communications a little fractured, they've had some turnover at River Hills. So I'm gonna suggest, you know, we were not gonna make a decision here tonight, but it seems like this project needs a reset. I propose that we, you know, City Water lead that discussion, bring all the parties together, so we can get on the same page, because I think River Hills has an idea of what they can do, and USM's still interested, there's some disagreement at that level between those two parties. We really need to get everyone together and hammer out what's reality here, so we can get on the same page, because at this pace, we'll get nowhere. And, you know, I think the utility's eager to help out, but even they're not in the middle of some of these conversations. So if we can orchestrate such a meeting in the next couple of weeks, and get those part, all three parties together, that'd be my recommendation, and we can come back and discuss this with knowing some real facts, maybe in a couple of weeks, or a month, or I guess it'd be December if it's not in a couple of weeks. So, I don't know what others feel about that, there's other, I'm sure there's other questions, we can field them on this issue. I know there's a, there's a proposal by River Hills that maybe there would be an alternate way to make the pro forma work out?
Correct.
That we've never contemplated before. Maybe some of the questions would center around that.
Correct, all I would add is that they did. They indicated that they, that the River Hills would make the pro forma work, and if it wasn't with USM, that they would make a financial contribution, so that it would otherwise make sense for the utility.
And I've got some questions on that, but I won't do all the talking.
Well, we didn't get any further than that.
Commissioner Parrish had his hand up, do you have a question or a comment?
A quick one, thank you Mayor. First of all, I totally agree with staff's approach, and I think we support you in your approach as you move forward with River Hills. And as far as picking up the pace or being behind schedule, I'm perfectly satisfied with this pace. I mean, I'd rather the strategic plan be done for the water utility, where we even make these decisions, but we're, we're trying to accommodate.
It will be.
Yeah, so River Hills, so at this pace, I think this is great. And as usual, to our water utility staff, keep up the good work.
And I'm not looking to shove this along quickly, but we're consuming staff time, working on it, and if things aren't organized, we're, in essence, wasting our time. I'm not saying it's been a waste, but we gotta bring people together quickly, so we're making meaningful progress if this is gonna go forward. And it, nothing will probably happen quickly, there's not even a set of plans to look at.
Correct, and again, they're, well, I mean, they're welcome to, but there probably wouldn't be again until we define those terms and conditions, because they're gonna ultimately want to know what either we, as water utility staff, or you as commissioners, are going to require of them in order to make that yes, which hasn't ultimately been rendered in this form.
Any other comments or questions on this item? I've got one, it's general, and you probably haven't thought it all the way through yet, but I don't think we've considered ever using such a model where an entity that didn't otherwise make sense on a pro forma basis would essentially buy in on the maintenance costs. Do we have a method of calculating that? What's the risk in calculating that? It seems like we'd be projecting what interest rates would be over a very long period of time to try and figure out the net present value of the revenue deficit that would make that be not upside down? I don't know if you've got any, it's essentially that.
I was gonna say, if you recall, it was about a week, so this is fresh to us as well. So I'm not sure we've had the opportunity to think through all of the logistics, but yes, to the idea that we would be looking at exactly as you described, the, essentially, the revenue deficit from the ultimate replacement cost, given the proposed connections at the time of development, and determining what the deficit is, and then requesting that as a lump sum payment. And I must also say, that would have been something we would have brought to the commission. I mean, this wasn't anything that we determined made sense, or that we would recommend, or...
It's just a stat of something, yeah.
...prepared to ask you to consider, because it was very late, as we were otherwise trying to bring, again, some of the terms and conditions as to what it may look like, assuming the project was, as previously assumed, that included both the residential development and university.
Okay, so not prepared to make a comment on that, that's fine, I didn't expect so, but... Any other comments or questions, or would we like to move on? We don't, there's no decision to make here, it's just a status update. I'll take the silence as we're ready to move on. So, let me know, if I can make that meeting, I'll come, Jim, so... Let's just coordinate and try and make that happen.
Okay.
You know, when people are able, I know it's...
Sounds good.
It's getting into the busy season for people, but we'll try and make it happen. Alright, back onto our normal, thank you for those from USM for showing up and letting us know your position. Back onto the regular agenda here. Next up, we have approval request for an exemption from the Meckuan Municipal Water Utilities Connection Policy for the property located at 7625 West Meckuan Road. Maybe a brief staff report.
Sure, I'll take this one. So there's, Primus Companies is looking to build a veterinary clinic at 7625. About a decade ago, the Legend Court Townhomes developed, and at the time, the DOT was talking about reconstructing the intersection at Meckuan Road and 76th Street, and they were talking about roundabouts, and so there was a lot of confusion over how much area was gonna be disturbed, and, you know, what would need to be relocated due to that. So the water main was run, you know, through an easement to get to the Legend Court Townhomes. So now, there's water main all the way around this property of 7625 West Meckuan Road, and every other property could be served by existing infrastructure. So the Primus Companies came to us requesting an exemption to extend a water main across their entire frontage. And for us, it makes sense, seeing as no one to the east of them or beyond them would ever need a main extension to be served. So we're on board with that exemption.
Okay, any comments or questions from the commissioners? Not, is there a motion?
Move to approve the exemption.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further comments, questions? Not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That passes. Oh, it's recommended onto the council. Oh, passes, no, you're able to make your own decisions here, that's right. Next, we have consideration of an amendment for the Meckuan Municipal Water Utilities Water Connection Policy related to calculation of water connection fees. Who wants to give this one? Kristen, Kristen, take it away.
Sure, I first want to clarify that this is not a proposed change to the fee sum. That is otherwise set by tariff and memorialized in our fee schedule. It does have a volumetric component to it, that we wanted to define the methodology for which that is calculated. And so it goes through a series of metrics. The first would be that if the applicant has any other similar locations, that we would be using actual volumetric data, that we could otherwise average to apply our connection fee calculation. That if there is not one, that we would otherwise look for similar customers within the utility to compare their volumetric data for. And if there's not a similar use, that we would use industry standards. For commercial developments, there's a conversion to resident equivalent units. And there are lots of agencies that have tables that are otherwise utilized to establish equivalent residential units for that calculation. So we're proposing an amendment to include that, so that it will be clear and concise for applicants as to how that fee is...
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Motion in a second, okay. Any further comments? Once, twice, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that measure passes. Next, we have, we're on to item C, okay. Approval of a Meckuan Municipal Water Utility Financial Policy Regarding Reserve Requirements. You, Kristen, again?
I'll start, but I have backup.
Okay.
In case I otherwise need it. The Meckuan Water Utility Staff is requesting consideration of the establishment of a policy to address minimum reserve requirements for what's designated in the budget as unassigned funds. You may recall that the water utility was established via referendum, which strictly states that no city funds can ultimately be used to support the utility, and therefore, there have been some stringent standards that have otherwise been put on the utility to ensure that it can remain self-funding, including some requirements on the initial borrowing that was utilized to purchase the utility. Since the utility has evolved, the dollar value of the unassigned funds has otherwise accumulated, and so we're requesting permission to set a minimum reserve. Now, of course, there being a minimum, we wouldn't otherwise necessarily indicate that we would use every penny in excess of that, but we would otherwise consider being able to reallocate those if it's well in excess of the minimum reserves, as the commission would otherwise approve for capital projects, as an example. So we're looking to establish the policy, so that we could otherwise go through and evaluate the dollar amount against that policy and make recommendations accordingly. The threshold, as otherwise proposed at this point, is 80% for a minimum of $2 million. Depending on the commission's view on that, we were still trying to be fiscally conservative, and we'd be happy to review that again in the future, if the commission so desires.
Are there any questions? This is actually a good news story, that we can talk about having reserve with this utility, because a few short years ago, that wasn't even a conversation we could have. When I looked at the memo and tried to rationalize the 80%, I did a little bit of research and found some data supporting, somewhat supporting that number. It seems like a large number, but the way bonding agencies look at utilities, there was some data out there, for those with double A or triple A ratings, they had almost two years of operating income in reserve. Double A was about a year and a half, and single A was roughly 85%. So if the utility wanted to borrow money and have an A rating, we're right about, that'd be right about the right reserve amount to have for a bond agency to look at it and grade them in that way. And that's, that's a median value, so there's some above, there's some below, but it's pretty close to the median value. I was trying to figure out, why is 80% the right number? So I don't, I don't know what went into the calculus, but when I did my own independent research, that's what I found. So it, it makes sense to have a reserve. We need to keep this separate from city finances by our own ordinance, and we would want to anyway. So we need to have some sort of policy, I think it's prudent to have it, and just have to decide what the right amount is. Commissioner Schneider?
I'm just curious, to Mayor Nurban's question or comment, how did you arrive at the number that you thought would be appropriate as a reserve?
With significant assistance from the finance department, but we essentially went through some iterations of seeing how much money it would otherwise be based upon the current expenses in comparison to what previous requirements have been, and some, maybe both industry standards and rules of thumb in terms of financing and how many years, or, excuse me, how many months' worth of expenses you should otherwise keep in reserve, should there be catastrophic issues. As noted, unlike both the sewer utility and the general levy budget, the water utility is not supported by levy, so it is strictly based on user fees. And so we wanted to be sure that we were trying to be conservative enough that we could cover costs if there was an issue that arose, but not so restrictive that we weren't, we were on paper appearing to overcharge our ratepayers for money that is not ultimately utilized by the utility.
Thank you.
And that's an important distinction, if emergency happens in the city, we incur a cost above a reserve, we can just levy for it. The utility, the water utility doesn't have that flexibility. So if something bad happened, you didn't have money laying around, you'd have to spike rates up, you know, maybe one time for a few years to pay for, but it could add to rate volatility by not having cash on hand.
And just to note, it is truly the unassigned. We obviously also have capital balances, which we also didn't used to have. So the water utility is also healthier in not only having this unassigned reserve at a value that we can be considering a policy, but we also have capital reserves that we don't spend out to zero extra, that if there was a catastrophic, that we could request reallocations otherwise utilized.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Not, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, do we need a roll call on this, or no? Well, we'll do it, we'll do it anyway. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Hancher?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrel?
Commissioner Parrish?
Aye.
Commissioner Schneider?
Aye.
Commissioner Nurban?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Next, we have award for a contract at Meckuan Municipal Water Utility Master Plan Update to the City Water LLC, an amount not to exceed $35,000. Do we need a report? I think we talked about this maybe at the last meeting, it's just coming to fruition now? Any questions for staff? If not, old Mr. Parrish?
Make a motion to approve the water utility...
Thank you. Make a motion to approve the water utility contract for the strategic plan, the master plan.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Hearing done. Please also call the roll on that item.
Commissioner Hancher?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrel?
Aye.
Commissioner Parrish?
Aye.
Commissioner Schneider?
Aye.
Commissioner Nurban?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
That passes. Looking forward to the results. Many of us are. Next up, we have the adoption of the fiscal year 2023 Mequon Water Utility Budget. This one definitely deserves a short presentation. Take it away, Mr. Boyd.
Um, so this is the 2023 Mequon Water Utility Budget. You know, analysis for what we've done over the 2022 accomplishments. In October fourteenth of 2022, we added roughly thirty-three customers. We're up to four thousand seven hundred and four utility customers. We've continued to maintain the system, flushing hydrants, turning valves. We've also had several infrastructure projects in 2022. A lot of the I forty-three projects where we, you know, had the work up at Highland Road, the work down on County Line Road, as I'm sure you guys have all seen going about as you drive up and down the freeway or Port Road. We've also done several residential developments. The Green in, or Two Hundred Green in Thiensville, Phase Two of Woods at Highland Park, Foxtown Townhomes on Buntrock, and they are currently working on the Green by Vildon Park. So there's been a lot of construction going on in the system. For 2023, we're looking at continuing the meter replacements, also more of the developments. The Swan Ridge development is being contemplated. The Green at Mequon, like I said, they're currently constructing. Homestead High School and Enclave Phase Six. We'll continue to do water meter replacements. And then also just wanted to note that Milwaukee Water Works is continuing to work on their rate cases. We've brought this to your attention several years in a row. It's been a long process, but they're still working on it. We anticipate that they should have that finalized sometime within the next, you know, six to twelve months. So we'll wait to see what happens there and with North Shore Water Commission. And we'll bring that to your attention once we know what those rate increases will be. But our rates are projected to be flat until we hear otherwise from either Milwaukee or North Shore. So we continue to carry a flat rate. And the only hiccup in the reserved for capital projects in 2021, I think you had noticed that there was a negative million dollars. And then in 2022, that bounced back. That was the I forty-three projects where we were required to construct the projects, pay our contractors, and then the DOT paid us back ninety percent of that cost. And there was a gap there between us paying the contractors and then receiving the money from the DOT for those, for that work. So that was the, the negative one million that we carried from 2021, and then it disappeared in 2022. It was the DOT projects.
Didn't know you were a bank for the state.
Yeah, right? So that is the update.
Thank you. Any question from the commissioners? No questions is good, I guess. Oh, okay. You still want to raise your hand. Commissioner Parrish?
Thank you, Mayor. Mine's on page twenty-nine of the packet. We're on the water capital project budget right now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The first question relates to, you're proposing a four hundred thousand dollar AMI metering system? Sounds like that's what you want to, you're funding the account with? My question is, what is that? And what's the benefit to Mequon? Then I have another question.
That's under the Utility Financing Fund, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. What that is, is it's automatic metering infrastructure. If you recall, we brought, when we switched meter reading technologies to the Riva radios about, it's probably about three or four years ago. We had brought a study to you that contemplated these new Riva radios. And those radios have the ability to migrate to what's called a fixed base network. So instead of currently, what we end up doing is we have to drive around in a utility van once every ninety days to collect meter reads. And you only get that snapshot in time. So once every ninety days, you'll find out what the customers consume for water. But in between, there's no idea as to what's going on. The fixed base network, it uses those same exact radios that we're installing currently. But we install antennas. They'll tell, they'll do a propagation study. It'll tell us how many antennas we need to install. But then, once those antennas are installed, then they can read the meters daily. And you can get hourly reads on the meters, so we know exactly what's going on. It allows the utility to do things like, we'll find out whether or not a customer's meter has been running for twenty-four hours constantly. So we'll know if a customer has a leak. So you can notify that customer that there is a leak on, in their home somewhere versus waiting ninety days, and now they have a six hundred dollar bill.
Are you buying it this year, though?
No, no, no.
Okay. All right. So I don't need to get much further into that, then.
Okay. Sorry about that. Yes.
This seemed like a big expense that maybe we were buying this year, so I was asking about it.
Right. That's just one of the optional.
And then my second question was, looks like we have a five hundred eighty-seven thousand dollar payment to Thiensville.
Yes.
Can you just elaborate what that is quick? And is it a one-time payment or recurring? Or what is that?
Yes. That was in exchange for the sewer service for the Woods at Highland Park. So the betterment of service project on Division, which otherwise went through what's paid for by Thiensville, but it's ultimately a Mequon Water Utility expense. So we have until December thirty-first of 2023 to meet that.
It was a loop that benefited all of our customers. At the time, Thiensville, when they were building and doing the sewer work up at the Woods at Highland Park, they were looking for, you know, some sort of a project. And we had this project that we had identified as a critical system loop. So this was something that every customer benefited from because it provides a main, a main backbone, twelve-inch water main that runs through Thiensville and gets us around the rivers.
It was a part of an intergovernmental agreement that was signed when we.
Okay. So we were already planning on it. And it's one-time?
One-time.
One-time.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Would someone like to make a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Motion and a second. Need for the comments? Hearing done. All those, well, Commissioner Meyer?
Something really major. It's, it's Bunchar, not Buntrock.
Oh, yeah.
Aye. The name of it's Bunchar.
We'll have that corrected. Um, have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrel?
Aye.
Commissioner Parrish?
Aye.
Commissioner Schneider?
Aye.
Commissioner Nurban?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Hancher?
Aye. Uh, next up, we have authorization, authorization of the 2023 water meter purchase for two hundred and fifty meters and associated appr-... Appurtenances.
Second.
All right. It's a new one. We need a motion first. Is there a motion? I just stuttered over the last word, second, caught me off guard. A motion and a second. Any comments or questions on this one? If not, please call the roll.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Schneider?
Aye.
Or Commissioner Nurban?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Hancher?
Aye.
And Commissioner Garrel?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Good luck with the water meters. Um, lastly, we have residences at Foxtown Water Service Valve Failures. It's just the status update for the commission on the current situation over with the townhomes. I don't know. Is Jim or Kristen?
Yes, both.
Both.
So we've identified an issue. Unfortunately, we're concerned that it's widespread and could impact all of the units, if not the majority of the units. It appears at this point as though it may be a manufacturer defect. So they did come to retrieve a portion of the material that had otherwise broken off on one of the valves while we were trying to shut off service to... For the irrigation contractor to make connection. So we're not looking for action. We're just looking to otherwise advise you of the issue. Unfortunately, because of the final plat process, that portion of the system has been dedicated to the water utility. We are past the one-year warranty, but we are pursuing conversations with both the manufacturer and the contractor to see if we can determine ultimately what the source of the failure is. This is decades before it should otherwise have failed. So, and we have another location with a very similar development that we're not seeing failures. So we're, we're just trying to do our due diligence at this point to discover what the issue actually is. And then assuming that there needs to be any action from this commission, we would be back before you requesting that.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's kind of a valves that are only a year or two old, breaking and causing you not to be able to shut off the water is a bit of a problem. Better to deal with it now than when people are inhabiting all those buildings.
Correct.
All right. Thank you for the updates. I think that brings us to the end of this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned as the Water Utility Commission, and we will call the Sewer Utility District Commission to order. Please call the roll. Well, actually, let the roll reflect that. Everyone who's here for the last meeting is here for this meeting. None of us left. First up, we have approval of the meeting minutes from September thirteenth.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing done. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. First up, consent agenda, agenda, there are two items for exemption requests for eighty-eight thirteen West Mequon Road in thirteen one twenty Northwest Shoreland Drive. Would people like to take these up together or separately?
Togethers.
Together's fine. Okay. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing done. I'll be looking for a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those are both approved on the consent agenda. It'll be back before us, the common council, in a few minutes. Uh, next up, we have our discussion items. I again would like to ask the commission to consider suspension of the rules to take up item C ahead of item A and B. There's some late-breaking news that is pertinent and might, it's important to get that out of the way before we take up the other items. So there's a motion and a second, hopefully.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Rules are suspended, and we'll take up item C. Administrator Jones, I think, is going to lead this one.
Yes, thank you. Do I call you mayor, or?
You can. Commissioner.
Commissioner. Other members of the commission. On tonight's agenda, we had prepared a discussion regarding a number of options for potentially adjusting the sewer utility tax rate to address future capital needs. And on the screen before you tonight is just a quick listing of those options, which included a status quo rate remaining at one sixty-two, and then a number of other permutations which would require increases in successive years to address the long-term funding needs of the sewer utility. Additionally, one of the options, actually two rather, included some debt financing. Option five was debt being issued in twenty-twenty-four for the lift station E project. And then option six, which was distributed earlier this week, included a hybrid option for that lift station project. Staff is requesting to table this conversation tonight based on some information that we've come across over the last number of days. And as was discussed with the appropriations committee earlier this month, the city has been working under a scenario whereby we have less levy capacity to increase the city's tax rate over time. And we've been doing some investments on our fire department over the last number of years, which have resulted in some increases, as well as some borrowing and debt service, which have shrunk our levy capacity. And historically, as staff here can recall, the approach to completing the sewer sub, the sewer levy tax sheet, which is filed with the state everywhere here, has not included the sewer levy. But upon investigation out of the finance department and through our financial advisor, we have come to realize that we've been counting the sewer levy in our, in our tax levy limit worksheet that's submitted to the state. And as we've just gone through an adjustment to the city's tax rate for the general fund budget, we are now at a point where we don't have a lot of additional capacity in order to consider the adjustments that we were going to be discussing tonight. Long story short, there's some further investigation that needs to occur, and we would request that this discussion be tabled pending the scheduling of a workshop meeting sometime early during the first quarter of 2023. We've been working with both our contracted advisors, the city attorney, as well as our financial advisor, Ellers, as well as some governmental agencies, including the Metropolitan Milwaukee Sewage District, which is a big part of the sewer tax levy, and the Department of Revenue, which we reached out to earlier this week. These are all busy agencies. They are on, working on timelines. We're not able to get information necessarily as quickly as we'd like. And so while staff is optimistic and excited about getting projects done on the, on the sewer capital plan, we also have to be realistic, making sure that the commission is in a position to be able to finance these improvements long-term. So we're requesting some patience from the commission as we work through some of the, the details that need to be considered so that we remain in a fiscally sound position going forward into the next several years. With all that being said, this was slightly, likely result in a slight adjustment to the sewer utility tax rate that is associated with tonight's budget. And Finance Director Engroff is going to walk the council through a couple of options that we would recommend be considered tonight pending the tabling of the tax rate discussion as I outlined earlier.
Good evening. Yes. So what you have before you are two options. So one would be to, well, the first is, we really need to comply with the levy limit restrictions, which would, as a result, bring that tax rate down from one point six two to one point five nine. So that's a reduction of three cents, or about two percent. And then consequently, the the capital funding needs to come down by seven percent, or a hundred, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. In order to, then, we have another option where to kind of counteract those levy restrictions and try to keep that capital funding level to what has been built in the packet, we can pass through additional user rate fees in order to keep that capital funding level. So there would be about a four percent or a three-dollar increase to the sewer flat quarterly charge, about a four percent or twenty-nine cent increase to the volumetric charge. And then, of course, the, the tax rate is remaining flat, and that would yield about an additional hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars of capital funding. And one point of clarification, that incremental four percent to the, the flat charge, as well as the volumetric, is incremental. So what's been built into the packet, that seventy-five dollar flat charge, had already is a one percent increase. So it was seventy-four, it's spent seventy-four dollars this year. So that would be about five percent increase year over year. And then what's built into the volumetric for, in, within the packet, is a six percent increase. So that would be an incremental four percent to that six percent for a total of a ten percent increase year over year on the volumetric.
So, thank you, Director Engroff. We realize that this information is coming in a rather late-breaking fashion, and that's honestly not how we like to do things. We like to get information out to the council and the utility commission. In this instance, well in advance, we like to make sure that information is publicly available on the city's... on the city's website so that anyone interested in a potential agenda topic has that information at hand. But again, just to reiterate, tonight's request is to table that discussion to a future date such that we can provide more detailed information regarding the long-term capital needs and how to finance such into the future. A couple of points I forgot to mention in my earlier remarks. One option for financing capital improvements that rests well outside the levy limits approved by the state back in two thousand and five is the issuance of debt. Now, honestly, we're in a rising interest rate environment, and so borrowing has gotten a little more expensive than it has been in years past. But if the sewer utility, or the city for that matter, were to issue debt, that's not something that we would need to contend with on a year-over-year basis relative to the levy limits imposed by the state. The other thing that we've discovered over the last several days is the fact that the enabling ordinance, which established the sewer utility back in nineteen ninety-six, mandated that the sewer utility be financed by both a tax levy as well as user fees. Subsequently, the state of Wisconsin approved tax levy limits in two thousand and five, and there may, and I can't say this for certain because we need to do more investigation, there may have been a decision or a determination to include the sewer levy limit as part of the city's levy limit calculation, when in fact, that didn't need to be the case, once that law was approved in two thousand and five. So, we need to do some more investigation with our partners and with our city staff members to ensure that from inception, we've been calculating the levy limit per the statute's intent when it was established back in two thousand and five. So, there's no action required here tonight other than to consider the two options that Director Engroff laid out as it relates to the consideration of tonight's sewer utility budget. And we'd certainly be happy to answer any questions the commission might have with respect to the information we just presented.
I'm sure there's questions. I'm ahead of you all by at least three hours on this. Commissioner Meyer.
So, you're not looking for a decision or for this fiscal budget?
Not, not on the tax rate, no. We're, we're, we're going, we're going to be recommending a budget that either, as Director Engroff outlined, brings down the tax rate by three cents on the sewer utility and results in an increase in some of the user fees, or brings down the tax rate by three cents, and we leave the user fees as proposed in the budget that was included in your packet.
So, are you looking for a recommendation tonight on that?
Yes. And then the sewer utility budget would be formally approved, or the sewer levy and the budget would be formally approved at the council's next meeting on November ninth.
We could make one decision tonight and make a different decision at that meeting. Now, I think to keep things moving, we have to approve something tonight. Otherwise, we'll need another special meeting to approve it before the next meeting because we have to recommend it by this body before taking it up at council. So, it's unfortunate this is all coming in very last minute, but we're up against the wall.
And this relates to the long-term capital needs of the utility. The budget, as prepared and as presented and as recommended, fully funds the operations of the sewer utility for 2023. Nothing is coming out of the budget. We're just trying to look long-term at our financing needs to make sure that we can pay for the capital projects that are otherwise contained in the five-year plan. So, it's a longer-term discussion in many respects.
Maybe one more point of clarification. On November ninth is when the proposed ordinance for the mill rate will be before you. The budget also sets the user rates, which is what's otherwise contemplated here. And so, based on your discussion tonight, we would update both the budget and the mill rate ordinance in accordance to your decision tonight. So, whether it's to keep it the way that the budget is otherwise shown in the memo, or whether it's to change it as otherwise proposed, that would then be fully baked into that document that would be before you on the ninth, as well as the mill rate of the one point five.
Commissioner Parrish.
Either way, it's going to be around a dollar sixty as far as the tax rate. And then, does that mean we're going to be forced to do debt? That's our only way of financing the lift station? Isn't that what all that means?
No, so that, well, the second proposal would transfer the capital funding to the user rate, off the levy into the user rate. So, the capital funding with the increased user rate would be equitable to what was originally proposed, but with the funding coming through the levy. The
I think
increased user rates, they're still capital funding. It's just not capital funding at the level that was otherwise originally recommended.
But we're not being given the chance? We can, we can no longer use the rate as a way to partially pay for the lift station? We're just giving more capital?
Well, our historical practice has been to cover the operational cost of the utility on the user fee and the capital charges on the tax levy. Because that's how MMSD does it. We structured it pretty much the same. You know, the one is based off of usage, the other is based off of assessed value of the structure being served. So, it's been a nice, clean separation for a good, long time. If we were to consider the option there, we'd be, it's a, you're eroding the separation of church and state, you know, between operational and maintenance.
Maybe further erode the issue or explain it? I'm not sure which is, the debt financing has typically been what's included in the mill rate or the levies. So, depending on what would have been the commission's decision or direction on whether to fund the improvements through debt service or through the mill rates, the same could apply to the difference between user rates and debt servicing, but that debt has traditionally otherwise been funded by that.
So, it's a couple cents off the tax roll and the capital funding goes down, or we choose to keep the sum total of the user charges in the, in the levy portion? Even it just shifts that cost to the user fee side of the equation? That's basically the choice we have to make. And we're going to, we're going to make that now, or we're going to make it in item five?
That's really up to the utility. Commission, tonight, we're on a discussion item right now on the agenda, so that could be brought up, added in as an amendment during the discussion regarding the budget.
Let's get the discussion portion over now. How, I apologize, this is all hitting you very, very late. I guess I'm only hours ahead of you. This was a lunch meeting and we'll get together after, after normal working hours before this meeting. What do the commissioners feel about both the options? One is, they're both sort of fun things. There's just one, the ball's going to go a little farther down the field. Understand, no one's have time to absorb it, and we're
Well, I would recommend to go with recommend to go with the option to raise the quarterly rate by the three dollars on the point two nine on the volume rate.
Can you say that again, closer to the microphone?
Excuse me?
Can you say that again, closer to the microphone?
Said, I'll make a motion to raise the quarterly rate by the three dollars and, and the volume rate, let them know.
I'll suck it. It's essentially treading water fiscally. It's just a little more comes from user rates as opposed to the as opposed to the levy. It's probably a good position to take, given, given where we're at. We can always undo it next year when we learn more from Department of Revenue and MMSD and digging back through our financial accounting history. We would at least keep funding flat and not further put us behind on capital charges. I, regarding the lift station, I think we're more likely to plan that next year, maybe expend the funds the year after, perhaps?
Part of that is dependent on some of the next agenda, maybe, if we otherwise have. But yes.
So, we've got a little bit of time to sort this out, but also realize it's not optimal to be asking you to make late-breaking decisions under duress. Okay, we've got some, some level of support for
Well, there's a motion, so.
Well, we're just discussing it now. We can, we can make the amendment to the, to the budget in a little bit. I think we can move on. We'll see how the, we'll see how the voting goes when we take up the budget in item five. Unless there's any more questions, let's get them out of the way now. Okay, hearing done, we'll, we'll move on. And if we need more, need more clarity in a couple of minutes, we can, we can always get that done. So, let's move on to lift station.
Well, then, do you want me to withdraw my motion? Because normally it's an actionable item.
Well, we're, we're in discussion items now. We'll get to the resolutions in a second. I think that's.
Well, there, there is a motion that would, I guess, make a recommendation as it relates to the fifth. So, you'd either vote on that or the maker could withdraw the motion and just bring it back up under five a.
Well, we can vote on, we can vote on. It's just a discussion item, but let's, let's, we have a motion in a second to take what would have been three cents of levy and convert it to equivalent dollar value in user charges.
Be second if there wasn't a motion.
There was a motion and a second. Let's call the roll on that.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Hancher?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrow?
Aye.
Commissioner Parrish?
Aye.
Commissioner Schneider?
Aye.
Commissioner Nurban?
Aye. It's recommended for inclusion in the budget resolution we're about to take up. Onto lift station E, replacement site selection and preliminary cost estimate. Kevinu?
Yeah.
You going to take this one?
Yeah, I'll take this one.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, commissioners. Good evening. So, just a brief history of this item. Following a condition assessment that began for lift station E in 2020, a number of electrical safety improvements were implemented for the site that's in the floodplain. In addition, the facility, it was built in nineteen sixty-five, and that assessment identified that a replacement station is required to address the capacity and allow for future growth. So, site selection were presented in October 2021 that identified requirements such as space and the need for construction to replace the existing facility that accommodates future operation and maintenance. So, then, in December of 2021, through 2022, staff held a series of public information meetings that was following authorization from the Sewer Utility District Commission to enter into negotiations for easement or site acquisition. And we, there was a series of outreach letters and site visits. And in addition, discussions occurred for a partial site acquisition, however, that ended where an appraisal that was scheduled was ultimately canceled. So, as a result, the, our best viable option for lift station E is in the public right-of-way. And given the expense of this replacement project, it's four and a half million to over six million, with, with that, that budget implication on the sewer utility budget, staff seeking guidance from the Sewer Utility District Commission on moving forward with the design. So, I apologize about the microphone coming in and out. But we're, what our anticipated next steps would be issuing a request for proposal from qualified and experienced consultants to work on the project. Staff would bring that design contract back to the Sewer Utility District Commission for award. And that scope would, as anticipated, include a series of public information meetings that would allow resident input as the best viable option is currently in the public right-of-way, where a multi-use path currently exists. So, there's, it's important to have that public information meeting as part of the process. So, if you're not familiar with the details of the area, it was in the packet under exhibit A, near Ranch and Oriole Lane. So, are there any questions about moving forward with the the site selection? Or should I wait till we get the map up?
I, I'll get the map up. I just want to note, in case there's concerns, even obviously the capital discussion that we just had, that the design, with consensus for the location, the design can be completed pending the conclusion to the financial discussion. We would ultimately issue the design for, for actual construction until we have conclusion on the financing option. We do otherwise have sufficient existing capital funding for the design. So, we're not trying to update the commission and the site selection to any decisions as it relates to the ultimate terms for financing the construction.
Commissioner Schneider?
So, I, I remember you speaking with us a few months back, maybe more than a few months. And it was challenging to find a site that was appropriate in terms of engineering and in terms of accessibility to the land. So, I mean, this doesn't, we don't have other options. I mean, it just seemed like this site being in the right-of-way and accessible would be the best one. And I did look at the map. It's relatively close to the old station, so I think it's, it's good in that way. And so, I'd be in favor of moving forward. This is a much-needed lift station. I think we could agree. So, I'd be in favor of moving forward with the design, knowing that the funding of it is a lot of money and maybe a challenge.
I have one question. Will the new lift station essentially be where the path is now? Is there any way to save that connection to the next neighborhood?
Ultimately, the intent would be to maintain the connection. It would likely not be in the exact location where it is now.
Okay. So, our intent would be to save that pedestrian connection, just can reconfigure it a little bit? Okay.
Yes, it's a sixty-foot right-of-way and the site selection criteria that we established, if the building is twenty-five, approximately twenty-five feet wide, we don't have final design by any means. We don't even have preliminary design. But if the building's twenty-five feet wide, that still leaves room for vehicle access on one side and the pedestrian path on the other side of the structure.
And obviously, when we say vehicular access, we mean for our
Yeah.
vehicles for maintenance, not that
Sewer vehicles, not, yeah, cars, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good clarification to make from Tom. I understood you. Commissioner Parrish?
Hey, Mayor. Just curious, what's the delta in the potential cost between four point eight and six point two million? What, what are you thinking we might encounter that could be a one point four million dollar swing?
That, that estimate was from the 2020 condition assessment is where that estimate was based on. So, that's not adjusted for inflation.
And also not adjusted for location. It was just based on the concept of a new lift station. So, part of the range is to be able to make all the appropriate connections.
So, we're saving some money and not acquiring a site or an easement. So, that's a, that's a major plus for this option. Definitely would like to proceed.
I think we just need to signal you to proceed. We have the money to do the design part, and we should get that rolling because we're going to have to do this eventually. Certainly would entertain any more questions, but it seems like there's general support for this. See how, heads nodding yes, thumbs up. Okay. Any more questions? If not, we can go on to a companion item for the lift station E backup to this companion item for the lift station E backup pumping system.
Okay, yeah, back in, thank you, Commissioner Nerven. Back in spring, the Sewer Utility District Commission approved a consultant contract for the design of a backup pumping system. This backup pumping system at lift station E contemplated diesel or natural gas power supply in the event of electrical power outages. And that this project was advertised for bid, and those were consistent with the engineer's estimates. However, in consideration of the lift station E site selection and moving forward with that design process over a twenty-four to thirty-month period, staff had budgetary questions and concerns regarding the nearly $600,000 expense as the bids came in, and are presenting this item to the commissioners in the context of this overall budget. Looking for direction as on whether to award the contract for the automatic pumping system or pursue other options if the Sewer Utility District Commission would reject the bid. One thing to note is that once the new lift station is constructed, that backup pumping system would be, it would, the preferred type would have been a diesel as opposed to the hard pipe natural gas. And that diesel pump would be allowed to be portable and used at other sites if needed. And there's also an option to look at a resale of that, of that pump, if it were to be acquired. So given the site selection that's been, you know, not formally approved, but there's been consensus on moving forward with the design, if that were not, if we did not get a consensus, I'd feel strongly about having a long-term backup pumping system. But if we are moving forward with that design process, given historically, we have not had both power feeds fail, staff can pursue other options.
And of course, this, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Of course, this is one of those items that became further complicated by the justly breaking levy discussions. And knowing that we may be under some additional capital funding constraints beyond what we anticipated when the package was otherwise put together, we'd have concerns about spending $600,000 on the backup system when really the ultimate cure is a new lift station, otherwise we can sure.
So that was just my clarification, that this would only really be needed for the period of time before this new lift station is constructed?
Correct. And to Kevin's point, it's not that there couldn't potentially be opportunities for reuse, but this specific location and this specific request was really due to the condition assessment and as a stopgap if we weren't ultimately able to replace that lift station in a reasonable timeframe.
So the issue would really only arise if there was a fairly widespread power outage such that both of our electrically pumped systems would fail?
Yes, or, you know, a combination of a storm and an accident, or, you know, something like that that knocked both out at the same time. We both, due to the amount of time it would take for staff to get there and the size of the portable pumps that we ultimately have, we wouldn't be able to keep up with the flows in the station and there would be an overflow.
They're fed by two different substations. It's just not two different electrical feeds off the same substation.
Correct. So again, it's the outage and an accident or, you know, something like that that would ultimately be.
That's a fairly significant amount of redundancy, I guess. Definitely having a backup to that isn't prudent, but it seems like an acceptable risk in the fiscal climate we're in.
And perhaps more than anything, we just wanted to advise everyone else of the risk. It's one thing for staff to make the decision in a vacuum and another for you all to be aware of what the consequences are. So just trying to make sure that first of all, everyone knows that the ultimate cure is a new lift station. So we're all trying to work ultimately towards that. And that, to Kevin's point, we can certainly look at other options in the interim that are at a scale less than $600,000.
Thank you.
So to summarize, we've received direction here tonight from the commission to proceed with design on lift station E. We need to figure out how we're gonna finance that improvement as well as other capital needs identified in the sewer utility budget, which we'll be getting to in a moment. And more near term, as was indicated in the memo from Deputy Director Driscoll, we have received two bids for this backup power system, which pending the commission's concurrence here tonight, will be brought forward on November ninth for rejection, formal rejection by the council.
Commissioner Parrish?
Thank you, Mayor. I would have asked, would going out to bid again yield any better results? Probably not much better. And then another question, actually, my main question is, has the system ever failed before? Has this happened before?
Both feeds have failed, but not simultaneously.
So this is a really unique situation, and you're just kind of passing or sharing the risk in this happening with common council or utilities?
Yes, and I'm not sure how well all of you sleep when there's large rain events.
I get it. So you're sharing the knowledge of what could happen. And I guess if you're implying that there were other lot less costly alternatives, I think those should probably have been explored. And I would like to hear more.
Yes. And they were, they're not as reliable, but again, given the timeframe, we'll look at those as.
Less costly and reusable in other areas.
Right. The system that's designed, that was authorized, it's an automatic system. So there isn't the time gap for mobilizing to the site.
Thank you.
That was gonna be my same question, with the having more of a mobile type of.
Well, we have mobile units, they're just, the capacity is much smaller. And so, given the size of this lift station, it wouldn't be able to keep up. So.
I mean, we have, there's mobile units that, less price than this, that can take care of whole neighborhoods. So with that, now there's a lag time in between.
Yes, that's what's otherwise.
That may be the biggest issue with the lag time inside of their book.
Can you also show the service area map?
Yeah, this one happens to collect flow from many other lift stations at a central point. So it becomes a, it all adds up and comes on stream.
Question would be then is that, so the new power station or the new backup system inside there would be not only enclosed in the existing one, or would it be outside of that anyway?
It'd be outside, on a pedestal above the floodplain.
So what would be the difference then of having one there that would be a portable one that would be stationed there as soon as that kicked off?
The preference is always to have them on sites because then they don't require anyone to get there. And so, but unfortunately, some of our stations are constrained in terms of site limitations where we can't otherwise locate one on site. But the new one would otherwise have one cited on site.
Well, what's the general consensus? Recommend this get rejected next month? All in favor of rejection next month, please say aye.
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 Okay. I think you've got direction.
Thank you.
We'll entertain other slightly less reliable but cheaper alternatives. That brings us to resolutions. Resolution 3991, resolution adopting a fiscal year 2023 sanitary sewer utility budget and establishing a 2023 sanitary user fee schedule. Discussed this a little bit earlier with regard to the levy and fee structure. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Just to clarify, that would include the item we took a vote on earlier to reduce the levy by three cents and shift the equivalent amount of dollars to user charges as presented earlier.
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hancher?
Aye.
Commissioner Gerro?
Aye.
Commissioner Parrish?
Commissioner Schneider? Aye.
Commissioner Nerven?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Resolution is passed on to the council. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 We are adjourned. We are now meet as the common council. Call that meeting to order. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the roll call show that everyone is here for the sewer utility. Meeting is still here for the following common council meeting. First up, we have consent agenda. We have the two sanitary service deferrals we just took up at the Sewer Utility Commission on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve those?
Move approval.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Those resolutions are passed. Next, we have a couple of committee of the whole items. First is discussion of resolution 3989, resolution disallowing the claim of Nicholas J. DeStefanis dated September 6, 2022, related to alleged violations of section 42 of the U.S. Constitution. Mr. City Attorney?
Section 1983 of Title 42 of the U.S. Code.
Thanks for correcting me.
Yep. Before you, is a proposed resolution to disallow the claim that had been filed. The reasons for that recommendation of denial, we discussed in closed session last month. I don't know that we need to rehash those at this point.
So the motion would be to deny?
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments or questions for our city attorney? Hearing none. Well, it's, we're gonna take this up formally in a little bit. I think we're just discussing it in committee of the whole now. So there's no further comments, we can move on to discussion of.
You're still in motion, because this is the recommending body.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of denial, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That is recommended back to us in a couple minutes. Discussion of resolution 3990, resolution approving an agreement for the transfer of public safety answering between Ozaki County, the City of Meck one, and the Southern Ozaki Fire and Emergency Medical Services Department. Chief Breyer, please give us a short discussion on this.
Good evening. So this is just a culmination of the discussions that we've had at the last few closed session meetings discussing the item of transferring our dispatch services to Ozaki County. So this is an agreement that was drafted by City Attorney Sajak that makes us a formal agreement between us and Ozaki County for them to take over all of our dispatch services starting January 1st.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? I'd like to thank our dispatchers that we've had for so many years for providing high-quality level of service. And, you know, this decision wasn't taken lightly. We just found it harder and harder to staff the service with the same quality of people that we already had, and it just wasn't really working anymore. This, it's regrettable the situation we're in, but we have to keep the system safe and reliable for all constituents. And when we can't staff it, we're putting that at risk. And this is really just putting public safety first. It's just, there's people involved and that's hard. Commissioner Jones, Administrator Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one note for the assembled members of the council here this evening. The Southern Ozaki Fire and EMS Board of Directors took up this item at their meeting last evening and approved the agreement unanimously. They're one of the three parties that are a signer to this agreement transferring services as of January 1st.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the chief? Not, is there a motion?
I would make a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further comments, questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution moves on to the council. We will now reconvene as the common council and take up resolution 3988, resolution ordering a special election to fill the District Eight automatic vacancy. This was recommended by committee of the whole way back on June 14th of 2022. And because of odd timing requirements for elections, it's only before us now. Are there any further questions or is a simple motion to approve an order?
Move to approve 3989.
Motion in a second.
I'm sorry, 3988.
I apologize. Thank you. Motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That resolution passes. Next, we have the consideration of resolution 3989, resolution disallowing the claim of Nicholas J. DeStefanis dated September 6. I just talked about this in committee of the whole. Recommendation from the committee was to deny. Is there a motion? Motion to disallow or deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor of denial, please say aye.
Aye.
And that resolution is recommended for denial. Resolution 3990, resolution approving agreement for the transfer of public safety answering services that we just talked about in committee of the whole, between City of Meck one, Southern Ozaki Fire Department in Ozaki County. We recommended that just moments ago. Is there a motion to approve it?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, that resolution is passed. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.